Good evening.
Good evening.
Meeting called order. Can we have our roll call, please?
Dr. Robinson here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Dr. Lunt here. Ms. Stinkum.
She's here.
Ms. James.
Here. So everybody's here, okay? We have some changes on the agenda. Mr. Webb.
Okay, on item number... Eight point seven, we'd like to amend that particular item to to progress the project management services, eliminating the architecture and engineering services. But, or would you take action? It's out of there.
It's been moved in second all in favor. Let's get a roll call.
Dr. Robinson, uh, Mr. Webb. Uh, Dr. Lunt, uh, Ms. Stinkum.
She's here. Say that. Okay.
Ms. James.
All right, it passes five zero. Also, we're going to move eight point four up to eight point one.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move eight point four to eight point one.
Okay, it's been motion in second. Roll call.
Dr. Robinson. Uh, Mr. Webb.
Uh.
Dr. Lunt. Uh, Ms. Stinkum. Ms. James.
All right, it passes five zero. Are there any more changes on the agenda before we drop the whole agenda? If not, can we adopt another whole agenda?
Mr. Chair, I think we adopt the agenda as amended.
Okay, it's been motion in second all in. Let me give us a roll call.
Dr. Robinson, uh, Mr. Webb.
Uh.
Dr. Lunt. Uh, Ms. Stinkum. Ms. James.
Uh, it passes five zero. Item number four, public comments. Do we have any public comments at this time? Okay, you may stand or come forward.
No, I just, uh...
Do you need the mic?
Uh, could everybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I just wanted to address the board. Um, I was speaking with Mr. Butcher to get some problems solved within the band and, you know, the environment for the band has been, uh... Bathrooms are unworkable, instruments are unworkable. Um, just the sheer conditions of everything there is just deplorable for the children. Um, he was unaware of the problems and I have personally been working with him and he has assured me that those problems will be solved. Um, I've given you a full list of all of my concerns, which I have addressed to him, and he has assured me that those will be fixed in a timely manner. But I still wanted to address the board so that you are aware of what's going on so that the condition for these tests can be fixed.
Thank you. Well, second. The band room?
Yes, sir. We would address all his... We would have addressed all the concerns in the band room at this point. Uh, for the most part with instruments, as you know, part of your initiative and directive they gave us some time ago was to make sure that we buy issue the band uniform out of some of the S of funds. You want to concentrate on both art and music at that particular time. So lay off on set aside for that, for those particular items. If you, uh, as you know, we have a string program also. So we met with the string director and have a list of all of his instruments. So now we're in the process of meeting with the band director and so we have a list of all of his instruments. And due to the fact that both of those expenditures will exceed the amount of fifty thousand dollars, we'll have to put those instruments up, you know, upper bid and those kind of things. I'll make contact with, uh, Mr. Brown in the maintenance department to correct some of the other items there.
I did... I just want to thank Jeremiah Ruff, Mr. Ruff and his wife for being parents that care, that are looking out for their children and bringing these things to our attention. Uh, I think Mr. Butcher and I both have heard from both of them and addressed their concerns and, uh, I just hope that more parents will come before the board if they have issues that are directly, you know, that directly affect our children. And so I thank you, Mr. Ruff.
Thank you. All right, now we have our recognition and presentation, five point one, combined high school choir performance.
Good evening. I'm Travonta Hill, co-director at the Natchez High School, and this is the Natchez High School Choir. Would you give them a round of applause on this evening? They're working really hard. I just want to thank some of the principals here, Mr. Jackson, um, the board. Um, I just thank you guys for the opportunity to inviting us to come and share on this evening. And we're going to sing two selections on this evening very quickly. So if you would, just give them your encouraging faces in the audience. And, um, this is by far, I'm privileged to be in this area, serving in this capacity as I know personally that the Natchez Adams School District has always had a stellar music program and we want to rebuild and continue that tradition here in Natchez Adams School District. At this time, Natchez Adams, uh, Natchez High School Choir, our first selection entitled "Why We Sing", and our soloist for the evening is none other than Ms. Anila Herring. Give her a hand.
A sound of hope. A sound of peace. A sound that celebrates what's meant, what we believe. A sound of love. A sound so true. In some ways, the world is given where we share ourselves. This is what we sing. While we lift our voice. While we stand as one in harmony. This is what we sing. While we lift our voice. Take my hand and sing with me. Soon the song.
Soon the song.
And the harmony. Bring together the love that happens on our hearts.
Share the joy.
Share the joy.
On the prayer.
On the prayer. It shall never begin, but soon it will start again. This is what we sing. While we lift our voice. While we stand as one in harmony. This is what we sing. While we lift our voice. Take my hand and sing with me. Music is a breeze. It can tear down the walls. Music is a lightning. It can speed to on and on. This is what we sing. While we lift our voice. While we stand as one in harmony. This is what we sing. While we lift our voice. Take my hand and sing with me. This is what we sing. We sing. We sing.
Again, that was Anila, excuse me. That was Ms. Anila Herring, 10th grader at Natchez. Give her a hand once again. Lastly, finally, we have Ms. Monica Fleming, 10th grader as well at Natchez High, and she's going to give us the selection entitled "He Never Failed Me Yet." Uh, we've been faced with so many challenges for at least a year and a half at this point, but we can, uh, we can testify this afternoon, this evening, that he's never failed us yet. We're still going strong and we're here this evening, uh, to sing for you this evening of the message "He Never Failed Me Yet" by Robert Ray. Natchez High, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. By the way, you can feel free to clap your hands with this one. Uh, we're going to be a bit expressive on this evening, so feel free to join the writing.
Thank you. Let's give them another round of applause, please. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Philip West, and I want to say something to the parents of their kids who just finished singing. Uh, I've been around a long time. One of the things that really impacted my life that has led me to be trying to be responsible for most of my life was the choir that I sang in at Sabre Thompson. I want the parents to know that when you have your kids involved in these kinds of activities, it's impacting their heart, it's impacting their head, and it's giving them character and knowing what it feels like to be in harmony with others. So I urge you to continue to do that, support the kids, and encourage other parents to put their kids in the choir or in the band or whatever the case may be. But believe me, singing in harmony goes a lot deeper than you would imagine. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have five point two, workforce development center. Uh, the Honorable Mayor Dave Dan Gibson.
Where should I stand?
I'll just stand right over here.
All right. It is so good to be with you today, good to see everyone. And I want to echo also what Mayor West said. Wow, music had a profound impact on my life growing up, high school choir. And so thank you so much, thank you so much for that. Uh, Mr. Hill, what you're doing with those, those young people is amazing. And boy, I wish I could play the piano like he would. Um, I am honored to be with you today and we're here just to talk to you, honorable members of the board, about an initiative that we would like to see happen here in Natchez Adams County. Uh, we are blessed right now, at this very moment, to be enjoying what we call the Natchez Renewal and seeing so many new businesses coming in and so many new opportunities. And we've had a number of ribbon cuttings and we've had a number of great announcements. But we are also now seeing what really is kind of a dubious number. It's a number I don't think we ever thought we'd see. And that is, we have a surplus of jobs, some have decimated, anywhere from eight hundred to a thousand. And some of the employers who are moving in and some of the employers who are already here are expressing concern in getting people matched with careers and getting people literally to come to work and being able to find a trained workforce. This is a problem not just in Natchez, but all across America right now. And we actually have something to celebrate here in that we already have some great workforce training programs in place. Number one being at our Fallon Center and the fine work being done by Mr. Cleveland Moore. We also have great programs at Colin, Alcorn, our When Jobs Center. But we lack one thing, and that is that one person that can coordinate all of this and make it work together and connect it with the employers that we have in our community who need these trained employees to work for them. In the city, in the county, in the school district, we all have people in position when it's such an important mission. For instance, we have our Director of Emergency Management for the county, Mr. Bradford. We, we have our Directors of Public Safety, such as our sheriff, our police chief, our fire chief. We have Directors of Public Works. And here in the school system, you have people who are assigned tasks that get up every morning passionate about that task, be it a Director of Communications and Public Relations, Mr. Fields, be it a Superintendent of Education, be it a principal or an athletic director or a coach. So in light manner, if all of these positions are so important in our schools, our county, in our city, there's a position that we need to fill that I believe is very important, and that is a position of Director of Workforce Development. This would be a person who would meet that need to bring it all together, to provide the leadership we need to be able to go after the grant funds, to be able to help make the best of the programs we already have, and then to help bring in the funds and resources to build the new programs that we don't have. We know for a fact that we have some large employers on the horizon. The largest probably Velocis. We had a great meeting a couple of months ago with the governor and with the top officials with Velocis about to bring the country's largest biofuels plant here to Natchez. Already leased the property at our industrial park. The governor's office, the staff under him at Mississippi Development Authority said, "This is what we wanted to urge you to do. Start building those work training programs now to be prepared for when these new employees will be needed once that plant is constructed." And you don't build these programs overnight. And so today, we're really asking for you to consider this to be a starting point, a time where we can look at the big picture, but rather than eat the apple all in one gulp, take the first bite. We've been talking this over with city, the Alderman, all of our officials in the city level, and we've been talking this over also with the supervisors. And just last week, I had the honor, just a couple of weeks ago, of addressing the Adams County Board of Supervisors. And so I'm here today to ask you to consider a discussion with us of going into an interlocal agreement that would allow the city, the county, and the school board to partner one-third, one-third, one-third in the cost to hire a Director of Workforce Development. Once we could get this Director of Workforce Development in place, then that person would then be tasked with taking us to the next level. We understand that there are major grant funds available right now. Deadlines to apply for these grants as early as January. We'd like to see these grant funds come here. But without a Director of Workforce Development, we could very well be a little late to the party, so to speak. Time is of essence, and the time is now. I had the opportunity two weeks ago to visit with Mr. Ryan Miller. Mr. Miller is the new Director of Workforce Development for the state of Mississippi, heading up the new department created last year by the legislature, the Department of Workforce Development. I asked Mr. Miller if he would help us. He said, "As soon as you get that person in place, let us know. We will come down and spend all the time we can." Because this is what he said. He said, "We would love to see Natchez, Adams County, and your school district do this. It would be a first in the state alongside just a few others." They are, I want to let you know, they are already doing this in a way up in Batesville, Panola County. Uh, Mr. James, we had the opportunity to be up there together with Ms. McDonald and I believe Mr. Moore was there and Mr. Jackson and others. And it was really good to see firsthand what Batesville is doing with the school partnered with the city, the Board of Supervisors, and, and the school board there, and the local community college, and local industries. Next Monday at two o'clock, we're going to have a special call meeting of the Board of Alderman and also the Board of Supervisors. It will be held at the City Council chambers. I think Mayor, you know where that is. Mayor West? I think you know your way to the City Council Chambers. It'll be good to have you back in the building. We'll be meeting there next week. And it will be a meeting on Monday to talk about this first step, this first bite of the apple. Mr. Miller said, he said, what's happening in Batesville is exciting. There are a couple of communities on the coast, I think, that may be doing this. He said, but you will definitely be among the first. And in time, we'd love to see every city, county do this. I believe if we can get together on this first step, then truly, in the year and years to come, it will put us ahead. It'll be at 2:00 PM on Monday at the City Council Chamber. And we'll discuss. And the first step is simply this. We'd like to suggest that, uh, a, a search committee be put in place, a job listing posted. And this done in a very short period of time. And that representatives of the city, the county, and the school board will come together in hiring this person. We've already established that the budget for this position, once including benefits and everything else, would be, uh, a base salary equivalent to what other department directors at this level are making throughout our city and county. Uh, we're, we're looking at about a $65,000 position with benefits included. So we think the first year, the first commitment would be about $33,000 apiece. And then this person would be housed and actually work under the auspices of Natchez Inc., where they would then have computers, desk, be able to have benefits, and then have a direct communication from day one with all the employers. Also, we would want this person to work very closely with our Natchez Adams Chamber of Commerce. But this person, we really want to be there to assist Mr. Moore, to work with Colin, to work with Alcorn. And then also, we want someone who has the talent, ability, and connection to this community to be able to identify with individuals who currently are not in the job market. And identify ways to get them into the job market. To have job fairs, to have incentives that get people inspired. At the end of the day, this is what we need to see. We all want the people here in southwest Mississippi to earn what we call a living wage. And to see our community rise above poverty. And when we can have that trained workforce, we are then, as you're doing every day here within the schools, giving these young people, and even adults, the skills to make more money, to bring more money home. Because we know that when we have more earning capacity, then everything else gets better. And you look around our state, and it really sometimes gets me a little worked up to hear people beat up on school districts in the state that are dealing with challenges that some parts of our state don't even have any clue about. We hear all the time about communities that are thriving economically, and oh, they've got great schools. And let me tell you, we've got a great school system here. And I challenge anyone to say otherwise. If they think otherwise, I would challenge they've never even been inside one of our school buildings here. But what's happening here is happening under circumstances that don't exist in a Rankin County, or Madison County, or a Jackson County, or a DeSoto County. We have over 50% of our population here living at or below the poverty level. Our teachers are teaching and performing and doing so well under some very tough situations. We've talked about it, Mr. Fields. When you have a child who is struggling because they don't have the home environment that's conducive to learning and to education. Our answer to that is workforce development. Getting people trained where they can earn that living wage. Where they then can see their families and their children having opportunity. And where, throughout our county, we can see our income level rise. And with it, the quality of our neighborhoods, the quality of our homes, and the quality of our businesses. And people making enough where they don't have to leave here, but rather they can stay here, raise their families. So this is the first step. But this first step is going to get us on the path, I believe, to where we need to be. I will answer any questions if you have them.
Well, I've got a number of courses, but I probably, it could probably be more appropriate to wait until we have this gathering.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mayor West. Thank you. I'll hand this back over to you, Mr. James. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really quickly, this is my third year in the district. Again, this is Mr. Hill of Natchez High. Um, I, I have the absolute best parents. If your students all was onstage tonight, if you could just raise your hand or stand, I want to definitely, definitely acknowledge all of my parents. Please give them a hand. Thank you so, so very much. I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Make sure we continue with, uh, ever since I've been on the board. But I also want to say that the remarks made by the mayor or the presentation, quite interesting. And, uh, I'm hoping that we will agree to meet and be a part of that committee to at least see what is going on and have some discussion on it. I do think that that would be something quite beneficial to our school district. So I would just like to say that, uh, I'm hoping we will have some people to become a part of that committee to hear what that discussion entails.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we thank you. Uh, and I, I think that everybody understands what you were saying. Uh, if I had a company and I was going to branch to Natchez, I want some people to be able to work in my company. You shouldn't bring a company anywhere where the people, you have to find people from all over the world to come work. So I'm, I'm a board. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Now, we have five point three, Junior Olympics participant, Kristen Harris. With speed, they do.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see, it is great to be a Natchezian, and it's a great day to be a Bulldog. So, um, we do have two students that we would like to, uh, honor today. Uh, one is Christian Harris, who is not here today. But Christian, um, competed in the Junior Olympics. So he went and represented, uh, Robert Lewis Magnet School. Uh, he trained all summer. Um, and he really said the experience was, um, amazing, and it was exciting, and he's looking forward, uh, to it in the future. So we want to definitely commend our student, Mr. Christian Harris. So in his absence, please give him a round of applause. Uh, the next student that we are going to, uh, recognize, while most kids were spending their summer on, uh, video games and eating cereal, this student didn't do that. He attended a STEM, uh, summer camp. And at the guidance of his grandmother, Clarice Martin, and, uh, the counselor at the middle school, Miss Bonnie King, he spent six days at the University of Memphis learning to build and program robots. So he is going to be a big part of this workforce development here at Natchez that the mayor was just speaking of. So at this time, please welcome Mr. Brian Rice. Give him a round of applause. Going to ask, uh, his Trump's Hope, Dr. Perry Rivers, to come down and join. He's smiling through the mask. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, I, I would like to acknowledge, uh, we have an elected official, uh, Alderman woman, Hall. Yes, can you please stand? Any more elected officials in here? Okay, thank you. Five point four, STEM Summer Camp participant. Oh, that was it? Okay. Five point five, Thad Cochran Media Educator. That is Seymour Freeman.
Good evening. Uh, Mr. James, I'm for the board. Mr. Butcher, Mr. McDonald. It gives me great pleasure to, uh, introduce the song. Uh, most of you know him. He's in our community. Uh, Mr. Marco Francis. Uh, he's an author, filmmaker, photographer. He works around, around the community. But during the day, you can find him at Fallon, mostly three to four days a week, and digital media, as LeVar Grant. He received the Thad Cochran Media Educator Award. He's a recipient for the 2021 Arts, Mississippi Arts of the Lions Teacher Award. At this time, would you come forth, Mr. Francis? Come on, Mr. Green. Mr. Green? Come on. About two, no, Mr. Francis? Here's his actual award that he got from Thad Cochran Distinguished Educator. And Mr. Francis, this is from the Natchez Adams School District, Board of Trustees.
Doesn't mean you're getting rid of me, you know.
No, we don't want to.
Oh, I got it. Um, when I first took on the assignment about five years ago, uh, there were people who said, uh, you're going to Natchez Adams School District? And I said, yeah, I am. And when I got there, I was greeted with some wonderful faculty, wonderful administrators, and wonderful students who were eager to absorb the film and photography, uh, program and lessons that I was there to present. And I have to say, when I couldn't go into the classroom last year, it was painful. I missed the students. But I'm back in the classroom, and they're working hard. So thank, thank you very much, Ms. Green, for putting up with me. Uh, Mr. Moore, for supporting Ms. Green, for putting up with me. And thank you, uh, school board. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Now we have five point six, Natchez Freshman Academy Arts Presentation. Are they here? I think it is.
Mr. James, I'm here with the board, uh, along with our performance marks, we also have a visual. I hope if you would, uh, look on the stages and words from, uh, Natchez Freshman Academy, uh, the teacher, art teacher Cassandra Gale. And they do a, a fantastic job. If you are in the room, um, if you get a chance after we, uh, start the transition, please, uh, take a look at these wonderful artworks from our very, very dear students. Thank you.
Okay, the five point seven, that was, it's done.
Five point seven, now we had a brochure in the seat, okay?
That she can do there. Okay. All right, now we'll go to item six, Approve a Minute. Approve of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, Regular Board Meet Minute. Approve of September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, Special Call Board Meet Minute. And approve of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, Special Call Board Meet Minute. Can we get approval?
Mr. Chairman, I have the motion that we approve. I approve item six point one, six point two, and six point three.
Motion was made by Phil West and second by Dr. Robertson. Can we get a roll call?
Dr. Robertson, uh, Mr. West, uh, Dr. Bunce, uh, Mr. Davis, uh, Mr. Davis.
Ah, it passes five zero. Okay, item number seven, Approve of Consent Items. Can we get approval?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to accept all of the consent items.
Okay. Um, the motion was made by Dr. Bunce, second by Dr. Dr. Robertson, roll call.
Dr. Robertson, uh, Mr. West, uh, Dr. Bunce, uh, Mr. Davis.
Ah, it passes five zero. With item number eight, um, eight point one, which was eight point four, approval of a accepted bid on sixteen section nine. Mr. Howard.
You want to open them in here?
Yes. Well, how many people?
I just announced for section, you're going to open. I think they want to do a lobby of seven.
Who are?
Good afternoon. Uh, President of the Board, Board Members, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald, Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent. Uh, this afternoon, uh, we have three bids, leases that have expired. And we will be opening the bids, uh, to see who, uh, will get the lease for the next five years. Okay, the three leases, we have section five, section thirty-one, and section thirty-two. Section, section five, we have two bids that were submitted. The original leasing, and a second bid is Eddie Carr in the building. Eddie Carr, okay, his lease. The original leasing is Giles Island slash Club Man Speed. Jimmy Riley, you're in the house. Okay. The first.
I'm sorry.
First bid we will be opening is Eddie Carr. He has his bid proposal sheet. Everything is filled out correctly. His bid, I'm sorry, Giles Island, the acres is three thousand and fifty nine acres. And Eddie Carr, he's bidding twenty eight dollars and eleven cent per acre for a total bid of eighty six thousand dollars. He has his cashier's check. Just filled out correctly for eighty six thousand dollars. The second, the second bid is going to be Giles Island slash Club Man Speed Bancroft, Mr. Jimmy Riley. The bid proposal sheet is filled out correctly. And Giles Island has, for the three thousand fifty nine acres, they have bid it twelve dollars per acre for a total of thirty six thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. Now, with Giles Island being the current DC, he was outbid it by Eddie Carr. Mr. Riley, Giles Island had the right to match the bid of eighty six thousand dollars to keep the lease. Mr. Riley, you be willing to match?
Yeah, I'm quite sure we will.
Question? Miss? Mr. Bruce?
Sir?
Would that be correct to propose if he wants to match it at this time?
He needs to indicate whether they're going to match it or not. The board will.
Will make that decision.
That's right, and they will not accept the bid from him until the funds are made up the difference in the deposit.
Okay, but at this time, he just needs to indicate if he wants to match.
What does the board, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Bruce, what does the board, what actions does the board need to take at this particular time? Do we, do we take the ticket under advisement until such a time as his determination has been made by the present leasing to match it?
Present leasing really makes me in a position to make its decision now.
Now?
And announce that to you.
Okay.
And so that we don't do Mr. Carr's interest. It's either they match it or they don't, and that's what they make the decision.
So I think I heard a representative from that organization indicate that that would be what they would be willing to do, is that correct?
That is correct.
So then it will be appropriate for us to, if he's going to match it, to make, to have a formal motion made to accept that you could bid.
Subject to, subject to.
This way.
Subject to making up the difference.
Right.
In the deposit.
Correct, yeah.
What's the, what's the name of the? The one who has?
The, the current leasing is Giles Island slash Bancroft Speed, and being represented by Jimmy Riley.
Giles Island slash Bancroft. Okay, our promotion that we would accept the bid of Giles Island slash Bancroft, with the understanding that he will match the highest bid and commit the difference in what he thinks was versus that.
Second. Mr. Chair, item.
Okay, we move in seven. Roll call.
Dr. Robertson, Mr. West, Dr. Bunce, Mrs. Newsom, Mr. James.
For those of you who are not familiar with the law, the law states that if someone has a lease in this particular area for hunting, fishing, whatever the case may be, on sixteen section land, the law allows for the present owner of the lease in a bidding process to match the highest bid that's presented. Is that correct, Attorney King?
Yes.
I just want everybody to understand that that's the law. It requires us to do that if that particular company or group are willing to match the highest bid, thank you.
Okay, the second leasing is section thirty one for four hundred and ten acres. And the current leasing is David Goddard, is Mr. Goddard in the building? Okay, his bid proposal sheet is filled out correctly, incomplete. His cashier check, well, on section thirty one, for four hundred and ten acre, acres, he's bidding twenty four dollars an acre for a total of nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. And his cashier's check is correctly made out for that amount. And he's the only person that has submitted a bid for this section.
Was there a minimum amount?
Yes, the, the minimum bid amount was for twenty four dollars per acre. And that's what he, he bid it for.
Twenty four what?
Twenty four dollars a acre. Okay.
Nine thousand, eight hundred and forty.
He was moving seven all of it, roll call.
Dr. Robertson, Mr. West, Dr. Bunce, Mrs. Newsom, Mr. James.
Ah, it passes five zero.
And the last section is section thirty two for three hundred forty four, three hundred forty four point six acres. We have two bids that are submitted. The first one by the original, original leasing, Ben Wooden. And there's a second bid that's submitted by Mr. William Chisum. Mr. Chisum and his wife, they should be on the Zoom. They wasn't able to be here personally, but they should be on the Zoom. The present leasing is Ben Wooden, Ben, you're in the house, okay? This leasing is the, the one, a couple of the Chisum family that's receiving the lease. Okay, the bid proposal sheet is filled out correctly. For the three hundred forty four point six acres, they're bidding twenty dollars an acre for a total of six thousand, eight hundred and ninety two dollars. The current DC, Mr. Ben Wooden. Okay, Mr. Wooden, for the three hundred forty four point six acres, he's bidding the minimum amount of eighteen dollars per acre for six thousand, two hundred and two dollars and eighty cents. The second bid for the Chisum family, again, they bid it twenty dollars per acre. Mr. Ben Wooden, he has the option. Sorry.
I'll match it.
Okay, he says he will, he will match it.
Our, our promotion that we would award the bid to Mr. Wooden, is that correct?
Ben, am I pronouncing you? Rowan, oh, that was correct, I'm sorry.
Mr. Rowan?
It had that W on it.
Our promotion that we would accept the bid of, to match the, to match the highest bid that we receive.
Second.
Second by Dr. Bunce, can we have our roll call?
Dr. Robertson, Mr. West, Dr. Bunce, Mrs. Newsom, Mr. James.
Ah, it passes five zero. Okay, thank you, Mr. Howard. We are now going to move our meeting back to the boardroom.
Our, our promotion that we recess for ten minutes.
Motion made by Mr. West, that we recess for ten minutes, second by Dr. Dr. Robertson, roll call. Ah, it passes five zero, recess for ten minutes.
Our promotion that we will come out of recess.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second that we come out of recess. All, I mean, give us a roll call.
Dr. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Dr. Bunce?
Aye.
Ms. Newsom? Mr. James?
Ah. Okay. Let's go to eight point two. Would be approved, you know, you like, the eighth would do is approved by personnel, that's right. Ms. Bright? One would, you just hear one there.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Ms. Bright?
Mr. Bruce, I think I can hear online, but it's not being moved.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. James, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. The Department of Human Resources presents the Personnel Board Report eight point two and the Personnel Vacancy List eight point two A. It's a recommendation of the Superintendent that the Natchez Adam School Board of Trustees approved the attached personnel changes and documents submitted, has given.
I have one question. Oh, and make sure I read this right. Did I read that all of the schools, there are no vacancies and there are certified personnel at all of the schools, is that correct?
Some of our staff is permanent subs. They're not all certified staff.
Okay, but, but we are.
You, you're correct, except the librarian.
Except the librarian, okay, I just, make sure I read that correctly.
I move for approval of the Personnel Report.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in seven. Roll call.
Dr. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Dr. Bunce?
Aye.
Mrs. Newsom? She, she said, ah. Mr. James?
Ah, it passes five zero. Okay. Eight point three. Okay, let's see, eight point two has invented being with, with personnel, but we moved eight point four. So now we are on the, oh, Ms. Beer, alright, well, Ms. Beer?
She's talking.
School, where are Ms. Beer?
I apologize, but, like, this is the first time we've tried to meet in two different places, so we didn't process time here, everything twisted over.
Mr. James, members of the board, item eight point three is a request to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Adams County Juvenile Detention Center. Uh, as you are aware, uh, as, um, the sponsoring district for the, uh, detention center for our region, um, the, uh, detainees, our students who are detained in the detention center are housed here, uh, at the Adams County Youth, uh, Detention Center. And because we provide services to those students, it's necessary for us to enter into a memorandum of under- understanding that we, as the sponsoring districts, we are the entity that will provide educational services. And so, it is, um, the memorandum of understanding, uh, outlines the federal and state guidelines, expectations, and responsibilities for both entities for providing educational services to students at the detention center. So it's a recommendation of, of the superintendent that the board grant approval for the district to enter into this M O U with Adams County Youth Corps.
One que- one question. Is anything different from this under, between this under, this memorandum of understanding versus the last one we had?
No, sir.
So moved.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and second. Next, ring, uh, proposals before the youth, the juvenile, uh, detention center, row call.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Dr. Bunce?
Aye.
Mrs. Newsom? She said aye. Mr. James?
Aye, the pass is five zero. Okay. Eight point three. Bid approved of the, Ms. Beer, is in? Okay, come on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald, uh, action item eight point three is recommended that the board review the updated school wellness policy for the Child Nutrition Department for this district, any questions?
Any questions? There are no questions, can you put?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the school wellness plan as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Bunce. Second by Mr. West to, uh, accept the wellness plan, or, uh, row call.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Dr. Bunce?
Aye.
Mrs. Newsom? She said aye. Mr. James?
Aye, the pass is five zero.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. E.
Okay, now we are at. Now we have about eight, eight point five. Pass, Mr. Ford?
Good evening, President James, members of the board. Uh, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald, Ray, Keenly. Action item, uh, for, I mean, eight point five. Is, uh, the, the sixth state department of education, it's also safety, safe and honest stewarding, understand this thirty and thirty-one, why these tools, they should be properly, or maybe they're feeling poor playing, but if they're happy, we can frankly, versus changes in their layout. It is, it's a potential recommendation that the Natchez County State Department of Sports and the Department of Education, if we're able to work in a way down, in the open, to master the law, the law layout of if we can, if this, um, nine, if this, uh, building. Are there any questions?
I have one question, is this a one-time, uh, payment? Is this a one-time payment, I saw?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
Our promotion that we would accept the recommendation of the superintendent regarding item number eight point five.
Second.
Okay, it's been motion accepted that we, that we, um, accept eight point five, the recommendation, uh, recommendation of the superintendent, row call.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Dr. Bunce?
Aye.
Mrs. Newsom? Mr. James?
Aye, the pass is five zero. Okay, eight point, that's eight point six, that's Mr. Ford too, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, what is this? This, this complaint, this is, we go to the one table so often.
This is with the Environmental Protection Agency, correct?
Right.
So we have a contract that, that we need that on the contract?
This consultant.
Consultant, right.
Right, that's right. We don't have a lot of choice on that, you know?
Right, I know.
I move for approval of the A H E R A compliance consultant proposal.
Second.
Okay, it was moved and accepted, row call.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Dr. Bunce?
Aye.
Mrs. Newsom exited, and Mr. James.
Aye. So she's not on there?
No, sir, she got disconnected.
The pass is four zero. Okay, eight point seven?
Uh, Mr. James and members of the board, with, uh, eight point seven, I had, uh, I requested that we delete the architecture and engineers because of the fact that we want to go on a tight project manager, first of all, so the project manager can work with, with our staff, and then we can set, kind of set the table. As you know, we are looking at, uh, renovating, uh, some renovation works, uh, as relates to the A C units, uh, perhaps the inner corner of the bathroom for McLawn, uh, Morgantown, and Wes. So we just want to hire the project manager down, we'll come back, uh, with, to you at a later date to look at the kind of architects and engineers and those kind of things.
Right.
Are these going to be able to be paid through the Estor funds?
Yes, yes, you know, if you remember, part of our Estor funds, whereby we're looking at new Estor systems.
Yes.
Renovating the bathroom, water fountain, and all those kind of things, uh, we have to, because of the fact that it's over fifty dollars, we have our time, you know, so, what we want to do this time, we want to hire the project manager first, so the project manager will, uh, assist us in walking through what we really want, because one reason, one thing, one thing we want to look at, probably, we're doing, we're going to try to update, up back in three episodes, we don't own three different brands. We need to have same brand, a uni- uh, you know, universal brand, so that our, uh, H VAC technician can be trained, and we might be able to use parts down the road, you know, ten, twelve years down the road, about using parts from one to the other, sort of trying to have three, you know, uh, multiple systems.
And do you think we're going to use a local contractor to do that?
I don't know, you know, for the most part, we wanted to, what's going to have to happen, is going to have to go out, uh, have to market it.
Right.
So if we get out working with our project manager, we can set the table for the year.
The main thing too, though, uh, is, and I'm not having to tell you this, Mr. Butcher, is the maintenance, is the ongoing maintenance of those systems. And that's why I say a local contractor, that we can call in the middle of the night and make, uh, make sure those things are happening, so that, that would be.
Right, well, I, what I hope is, Dr. Bunce, this time, that we'll be able to train our H VAC person, and at the same time, have one or two local persons who wants to, uh, take part in the training, so, if our local person happens to leave us, go somewhere else, and be sick of something, then we will have a backup system. Yes, sir.
Yeah, let me just say this, uh, which is probably, well, it is the reason why I requested, uh, some, and I've seen the information, it's a part of the fact that actually, regarding our Estor funds and how much we've expended, uh, how much we have committed to, and how much we are projecting that we'll be expanding, because I was concerned with making sure that we do it in such a way, when we determine, when we hire the project manager, we want to do, uh, H VAC at this school, or whatever we need to do, we need to have a projection of cost on that, uh, because I, I just want to make sure that the monies that we have gotten, uh, and, and projected to get, that we have enough money for a rainy day, okay? And other kinds of things that may come up during the process, uh, of our, uh, operating, you understand, uh, uh, what my, that's my concern, and I was just saying, we need to just know, step by step, how much we've got, how much we're going, you know, we're projected to do, what those projected costs are, and how much after those projected costs are made, and we're going to do whatever we're going to do, how much in funds and revenues we have left in order to do other things, and to continue to do other things, that, that was my.
Okay, you know, uh, the board gave, uh, it was some direction some time ago, and we need to have an itemized, uh, breakdown of, these, these are supposed to be coming out of Estor, Estor three.
Right.
We have an itemized breakdown, but I think that in some of the instances whereby we're talking about months of renovation, I would think that we can cut back in some areas, that's why I want to do this in the reverse, bring on the project manager, because of the fact that our project manager have a host of knowledge in building, and he's, uh, saved us a lo- a lot of money, the group has saved us a lot of money with our new school and our renovated school, so I think that once our project manager knows what our goals might be, then we can come back to the table, and then perhaps reset the table with some specific figures and those kind of things, you know, they'll be able to come back and perhaps even give us a good guesstimation of what it's going to cost us.
Right, and, and, right, that puts us in a, you know, set in a position where we can prioritize depending on what the financial situation is, and that's my concern also, and I think the entire board feels.
Right, we understand that.
Right, okay. Our promotion that we would, uh, employ, uh, Volker as our project manager for future projects, uh, through the Estor funds and what have you, in the Natchez Adams County School District. Was that too broad, Bruce?
No, sir.
Okay. Looks like you lost for the Volker, they didn't got to get a second.
Okay. Well.
She's back.
Here is motion, alright, it's been motion by Mr. West, uh, that we employ Volker's group for.
As our project manager.
And second by Dr. Bunce, row call, no, we don't need a row call.
She's back.
Okay, you need a row call on it.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Dr. Bunce?
Aye.
Mrs. Newsom? Mr. James?
Aye, did she say aye?
Yes.
Pass is five zero. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm reading something else here about five submissions, that's later, right? Five submissions right here.
Dogwood, we had five people in, 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 uh, architecture, project manager.
Five people, which should be in the project manager?
No, altogether, we had five people.
Five submissions for ar- architectural and engineering services, two submissions for project management.
Okay. Who was the other submission for project manager?
Uh, Dale Bailey and Associates. The two submissions for project managing services was Dale Bailey and Associates and Volker. The five submissions for architectural and engineering services were M P Design Group, Dale Bailey and Associates, Pride and Barrow, C F L, and Sal and Architect.
Who is Dale Bailey and Associates?
Dale Bailey and Associates, we, we're doing, they have, we're working with it right now.
That's our F I T.
They got it.
Oh, Bailey, you talking about, oh, okay, the Bailey Group, oh, okay.
The other ones with, uh, architect and engineer, can we get some information on that?
We'll stick that if, like, listen again. We need to help them, we, we, we'll stick it again.
Because, because they're going to be next, right?
Yes.
Alright.
Where we standing?
Alright. Alright, eight point eight?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jack? Is that you? Okay, well, we know.
Anyway, eight point eight, Mr. James, uh, eight point eight, that's a, you know, one of, we're, we're a community team, and we've always worked, uh, with them in the past, and I think that, uh, they, you know, have all their paperwork, you know, they have the insurance and all, and, you know, the thing that I think that we need to make a note of here, these are parents, uh, citizens who are volunteering their time with these, uh, students, uh, on, on the weekend, and for the most part, they take grades as well, that's a part that I like.
Okay.
What are they doing exactly?
Their football.
Playing, oh, the small, oh, hockey football.
Want to use our.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the use of our facilities for, was it the Natchez Cowboys? Is that their name? Good.
Natchez Cowboys in second to none sports.
Second to none sports.
Second.
Okay, it is motion and second, row call.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Dr. Bunce?
Aye.
Mrs. Newsom? Mr. James?
Aye, the pass is five zero, eight point nine, bid over, Mr. Tennessee? But he, he got better than him.
Mr. Tennessee, unfortunately, the board is unable to hear you in the room, those who are online can hear you, but we cannot hear you in the room, so if you please come to the board room, please, thank you.
Mr. Tennessee, also, you got eight point nine, when you come back at nine point three, you can do it all at.
Uh, one time?
There you go, come back and release you.
Alright, good afternoon, members of the board, President James, Mr. Butcher, uh, Ms. McDonald, um, opening bids, hold on one second. Last one, we ask the board to advertise for bids for, um, voice and data upgrades, we received three bids, electronic bids from Netlink, Synagetics, and Cable, I mean, Coverage One, we would like to come back at a later date to go over those bids, so the next board meeting, or next, uh, executive board, not executive, but. Yeah, special board meeting, we can, um, present our findings.
Okay, let me ask you this, if we end with a special board meeting about two weeks from now, we have an opportunity to analyze those bids and bring it to a special board meeting?
Yes, sir.
Will that enhance the timeframe when you're getting the project underway?
Well, we're going to do a reverse auction Friday, so hopefully they'll drive down the cost, and then after that, we, we can select them out.
Okay, what's your, what's your target date for, for starting this project?
I can get a contract in here, hopefully next month, the problem is going to be getting the equipment, they're telling me that it's a three-month turnaround for all the equipment. So, the faster we can do this, the faster they can order equipment.
So we get on the list?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And what are we doing now?
Well, we're, we're upgrading the, the switches at each school and the access funds, so we can have a one-to-one environment. Now, we have three thousand one hundred and seventy-two prom books. Now, we have three thousand one hundred and seventy-two prom books, but we can't support that without this upgrade to, to the infrastructure.
Okay.
We got, we got a traffic jam on our internet highway.
No, we ain't got a traffic jam.
You got it.
It's, it's, it ain't traffic.
How soon can you analyze that, these bids, Mr. Butcher?
Sorry, tomorrow, you want to do it tomorrow?
You're going to do it tomorrow? I'm just, I'm just wondering if, I mean, I think protocol allows us to have a, I think that Mr. James can call a meeting via, um, email, um, since we've all, we cannot do it through, I mean, um, Bruce?
Pardon me?
I, I know that we've taken certain votes and other boards I've been on through email, and I think that that, um.
I, I think a special meeting or recess meeting has to have some, some members of the board present.
I'm just trying to, okay.
That's right.
Well, once you receive this information, uh, we'll get back with the board members to arrange a special meeting, because, uh, I like, if you can't see, we like to try to go it on, at least you put us on the waitlist, and I know they say three months, but you know, right now with the, with the renovation of the, uh, of the old high school, we waited six months after this.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so what we need to, uh, how we do that?
We, we, we'll, we'll, we'll need offer motion to, uh, accept the bids, uh, table them until such time as we get a recommendation for the best bid.
I get a second.
Second.
Okay, motion to accept the bid, to table this until we get recommendation for the best bid, um, and then second by Dr. Barnes, roll call.
Dr. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Dr. Bunt?
Aye.
Mrs. Newsom?
Mr. James?
Aye, pass the five zero. Thank you, go on, do your nine point three.
But do you have any question, that's the Monday technology report, do you have any questions on that?
I've got one question, I've, I've read a lot of information in my brief, in my board book regarding, I think it was surplus property or something like that, was that correct?
Uh, surplus property, that's Mr. Oz. As far as like.
I saw a lot of computers and things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to be Mr. Oz.
Oh, okay.
That might be interesting, of course, but one of our goals of being is to remove off of the state inventory list, all of those excess computers that's some over ten, fifteen years old, some of those field computers look like TVs.
Right.
So we're trying to remove all those off the list so we can dispose of them, because we just running out of space. Uh, in some cases, uh, we sent Mr. Heinz a one or two address, wherever somebody might be interested in them, but it don't seem like, the only thing I see right now are old prom books and those kind of things, they're just not into those old, you know, TV shaped, uh, computers and those kind of things.
Well, that was my rationale for asking the question, because I was assuming when I looked at the, this is so, there's so many things on it, I would, I was thinking that perhaps some of the, those things that are on that list could be utilized by somebody else.
But now they're in the process of cleaning up all the inventory, and it's important to the state, anything that's under two hundred and fifty dollars doesn't need to be tagged, and we've been tagging it for years, so they're cleaning that up too. So that's the reason why you probably getting a lot of that information, because, you know, we was tagging ten-dollar tackle ladders, and they will order like seven hundred of them, so that's seven hundred tags. So that's why we deny that information.
No, I was just trying to see if there was a way where somebody else would maybe be able to utilize somebody, seeing could have access to them as opposed to throwing them in the trash. That's what I was, that's the only thing I was.
By time, by time our, our children get through with it, and then my department get through with it, it's pretty much trash.
And what he said, because if they, anything that's usable.
We gonna use it.
They strip them down.
Yeah, we gonna use it.
Okay.
The main thing too is to make sure that they're, that they are disposed of correctly.
Yeah, waste management say we can really just put a big X on it and then put in the dumpster, that ticket from there. But all we want to wear is shells, we taking all the hard drives, processor, motherboards, anything that we can use somewhere else, we use it.
Yeah, they don't want them.
If we spend ten dollars on them, we not get eleven dollars out of them.
You can't, you can't get them nobody in the third world country.
They can tell you, I love school.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, but see, you ain't know what they were throwing away. The third world countries don't want them.
It's not good, it's, it's not usable at all.
That's it.
It's a long, it's a lot, it's a long list.
Yeah, I mean, but it's, it's years and years and years of equipment, I mean, and we just, they just hold on to it, we was holding on to it, and holding on, because y'all predecessors told us that, don't retire anything anymore. And so we didn't retire, we just stacked it up in classroom.
Right.
So since y'all here now, you know, y'all said let it go, so now we, you know, Mr. James said, you know, what you said, put it in the bag.
Let me, let me, let me.
And let them all out of it.
Build a barn, bud, we need that. Don't come and come.
I got some patterns.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We clarify a little, we're not going to make an authorized debt.
Nah, we'll, we'll be live on here.
Thank y'all.
No pause.
Nine point one, Mr. Bird?
Really not here, that'd be Ms. Stewart today.
Ms. Stewart?
Mr. Bird, that, Mr. Bird did a workshop.
Okay, all right, Ms. Stewart.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. James, members of the board, trustees, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald Green, Attorney Keely, administration, faculty and staff of the Natchez Adams School District, our community stakeholders and all others attending. I, Carmen Stewart, on behalf of Mr. Bird and the Business Department of Natchez Adams School District, have presented to you, uh, item number nine one, a review of the financial reports for September twenty twenty-one, along with a summary of the capital projects for hours twenty twenty-one. These reports have been forwarded to you electronically for your review. Are there any questions or concerns?
No, ma'am, you, you have a, a, a much stronger voice than.
I like the way you see it there.
You can tell him I said that, because I'm just teasing it really.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Stewart, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Nine point two, Ms. McDonald Green.
Um, Mr. James, we will remove nine point two, no policies for that.
Okay. Nine point four, we ahead nine point three, is this Ms. Tom?
Yes.
Good afternoon, President James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald Green, before you, you have a copy of the ESF one and two reports for the month of September. Do you have any questions?
I'm not going to hold anything up today, I believe. It was an, it was an approval report.
So, okay. We got some money that's over, right? As a two. Okay. All right, uh, now we have, uh, nine point five, which is the board calendar, and then we need to add or take off the calendar, let Ms. Davis know, our board calendar. Uh, nine point six, intending to.
Hey, Mr. Jimmy?
Did you want to disturb, also athletic thing?
Yes, yes, good. Get your seat, uh, that land director of board have put together a brochure here, actually put a lot of time into this. Uh, we did meet with her along with, uh, some members of the coaching staff on Monday, because just like we said, you have to meet every so often, or to see where you are, what you need to move on. So we did meet with some, with her and Mr. Jackson, some of the members of the coaching staff, we plan to have a meeting similar with, uh, with our, our band directors, uh, one day this coming week, uh, but you can peruse through this, take a pen, if you have any questions, let us know, and we can respond to it, get Coach Moore to respond to it.
What is the name of that program?
It is the.
Any of that?
Yeah.
That's all that they.
That's it.
Right.
Uh? Is it, is it something to do with, uh, the financial and, uh, the logistic of the financial, that kind of stuff? Is that what we're talking about?
Right.
Because, is that what we're talking about, or maybe, you know, maybe.
No, this is just really more souvenir book that you put together here basically.
All right, what you have there is a, a, a book that highlights the athletic programs that we have, uh, throughout the school district.
I thought I saw something with, with the payment process, some new program with the pay, payment process and, and that kind of stuff. This, I don't think this is.
Seven point five.
Seven point five? Oh, yeah, I, I missed.
Okay, seven point five, that's when you, with your pieces, right now, you know, one point, you paid, you wrote a check out for a piece, they taking it to the safety stand and cash, we no longer doing that. Right now with the payment plan, uh, the Mississippi Department of Athletic have, uh, set up, what they call Dragonfly, and I don't know if we have a payment plan there. You know, they'll sign the officials, they let us know how much the piece is going to cost, include the travel and everything, and they can go directly, we don't have to wait for their money. Also Dragonfly, we also use that to report eligibility, you know, at one point you had to go through everybody's grades and send a list in and all those kind of things, now everything is on Dragonfly. If you played football, decided you wanted to play, uh, run track, uh, play baseball, all you had to do was just check to verify that the grades are in, in line and everything else is already there.
Okay, so that's what I, my question was, in other words, what Dragonfly does, basically takes some of the responsibility of whomever was doing it before Dragonfly, right?
Right, that's right. It makes it a little bit, it makes it a little bit easier and simpler, plus your priest don't have to wait for their money, that's the big thing, you know, the priest will be on Friday night from ten, he don't have to wait till the next Friday to get a check. Because like, you know, we only write checks twice, twice, uh, twice a month.
Okay. So you think from a feasibility perspective in terms of what Dragonfly does and what we were doing, is more efficient to do, go do it through Dragonfly?
I would think so, plus, you know, sometimes, Mr. West, it's not a matter of choices, you know, every school in state is going to that, and that's why they put it in place.
Okay. Just wanted to get information on it, but.
Okay, also with that, I was looking at it. They have a schedule for the basketball, but it, so the basketball, the girls and boys play the same night every, every time?
Unless sometime in some instance.
I see where they say boys only, uh.
Right, sometimes, you know, uh, you might only have a boys, only team plays, uh, girls only, you know, the season ends about, we can show apart because the girls start their playoff and then the boys start their playoff.
Okay.
So this will be our first year for this, right? This program?
For Dragonfly, that's right. Now, we started Dragonfly for eligibility, I think, uh, this is probably the third or fourth year for Dragonfly in relation to eligibility, but a pay, a pay plan, this is the first year. So that's why we get, we seek, uh, board approval for this, because right now we have a policy saying things should be paid this way.
Okay.
So only for this athletic situation, where we, uh, succeed about.
Okay.
Mr. Butcher, I, I'm hoping that we can see something similar to this as directed to the arts, music, band, choir, that we're giving equal emphasis to what we are doing in the arts. It's a pretty slick magazine for all the sports, but we need to be as aggressive and proactive as we are with sports to the arts. Can we say that?
In other areas, the arts and academics and so forth.
Yes, well, I think the arts are academics.
They are academics, I agree. But acting is broader.
Right.
Exactly.
All right. You got anything?
Uh, update.
Okay.
Uh, Bob, uh, I'm going to have an update, our project manager. What he's putting is, uh, is this driving there, uh, we, you know, we had to close down, the iron people had to close down for a whole week because of COVID. So, uh, I was on the job right early Monday morning, they are back moving, you know, to the part that you see right now, that's the administrative part that they're putting up, and, uh, they opposed the wing for the, uh, the twelfth grade, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, and they're also in the process of, uh, pouring the grade beans for the eleventh grade wing, so after this, hopefully they have a port, are they scheduled for this week, Bob?
They're scheduled to port tomorrow, the tenth grade slab.
Okay, so they have, we'll have the tenth grade slab port tomorrow, and I think the sun is about halfway out of the ground for the eleventh grade slab, so we making some progress. It's my hope, Bob, that we will be at least have a roof on the building before winter time.
Understand your hopes. And it's noted.
It looks, seem like they're moving a little faster than the same train, do we need to pull them?
Yeah, that's it.
They moving fast.
They moving pretty quick.
But they got their roof up too.
Yeah. So the key is going to be the roof, and that's going to be the critical path coming up. Uh, let me get these opened up. Before we get started with this, I'd like to take the opportunity, uh, first off, Mr. James, Mr. Butcher, members of the board, thank you for tonight, uh, and thank you for selecting Volker to do the ESF funds. Uh, it's going to be a challenge, um, you know, with all the different parts and pieces, thank you. And, uh, we look forward to working with Mr. Butcher and his staff and, and putting those pieces together and, and utilizing the money the best that we possibly can to give you, you know, what you need in your schools. So it's going to be a challenge, you know, the, sometimes the new schools are much easier, you know, the big ones, big money, but you're starting fresh from the ground up, so we look forward to it, and, uh, we're going to work diligently to make sure that, uh, we, we spend that money wisely. So thank you very much. Um, as far as the high school, um, Mr. Butcher did let you know, we had some issues with the steel erector, um, COVID set in, and this is something that the industry is facing across the board. Uh, and because of quarantining and what you have to do, a lot of these guys are living together, you know, they come in and they run together, stay together, so they're in close contact, so it shut down the whole crew, a crew of six people, had to quarantine for ten days, so, um, they just started back Monday, and we're going to ask the contractor to give us a revised schedule, showing how he's going to make up those two weeks of lost time. So that's something we're going to be working on as far as the schedule is concerned, to get that rolling again. Uh, this is a picture of, um, just the pigeon area, uh, this is where the cooler is going to be, um, see if I've got an overall picture, this is some of the steel erection that took place since they've been back, uh, this is the, uh, area where the cafeteria will be and the front entrance to administration, you can see in the back is the gymnasium. Just another picture, the gym, the gym still is about ninety-five percent complete, they're going to start painting the red on structure above the top that's going to be exposed, all of these rafters and purlings you'll see, so they're going to paint that the blue color, and there'll be a bottom back insulation that will go on top of that, that you'll also see, that's going to be white, and, uh, again, that work is going to be starting in the near future. This is the area that's going to be poured tomorrow, it's the tenth grade learning house. Uh, the ninth grade was poured two weeks ago, so this pour will take place tomorrow, and then the only two pours left will be on the eleventh grade and twelfth grade wings. Those will be done, uh, hopefully within the next four weeks and completed. Site utilities have started, they began to work on that, and then plumbing and electrical rough end continues through eleventh and twelfth grade. So the critical path is still concrete, but then shortly following that will be the metal building and structural steel, like Mr. Butcher said, trying to get a roof on the building to get dried in is always critical, um, getting walls up, and hopefully we'll see some, some progress, good progress being made. Any questions on the high school? Okay, on the middle school, uh, pull these pictures real quick. Didn't quite open in order, so I'll jump around, this is, uh, the rooftop, they started work this week, well, actually last week, on the roof, so the material came in and they're starting the roof overlay. A part of this process is redoing, uh, redoing all of the blocking around the perimeter, that's why you see these two-by-fours up on the roof. Uh, you can see this area, maybe hard to tell, but this is where they had the wood blocking that was taken out, um, and the reason for taking it out, um, is sometimes you get questionable, uh, anchor points, this is a, uh, picture of a rusted bolt. sometimes you get questionable, uh, anchor points. This is a, uh, picture of a rusted bolt that was holding the blocking. Um, since this is gonna be another twenty years of roof that you're gonna have on this building, we wanna make sure that is, is done properly. So the architect called for the blocking and the anchors to be redone. And that's what you see in that picture right there, that's just a close up of what that, uh, that area looks like, taken out. And eventually it's gonna be put back in. Let's just, let's just give you that picture, what, where it was cut out, uh, just give you an idea, these are two by fours that are stacked up. That have been cut out, and then new blocking will take its place. And that's gonna meet the wind rating and all the warranties that will be required, uh, with the new roof. This picture's a little deceiving, but it looks like part of the road bed, but this right here where I have my cursor, that is the new overlay that's covering the blocking. That's like a second layer of a, uh, you can call it like a flashing. And then the new roof is just gonna go right on top of this roof. It's a fleece back TPO, they call it. So an adhesive goes down on the existing roof, and then a new roof rolls right on top, and it's literally glued down to the old roof. And you get a new twenty-year roof without having to pay the expense of tearing out the old roof. So this was something that was, uh, talked about in design to help, um, help save money and costs, and I think it was a great option. Ran into a couple of problems, one in particular in the home ec room with the existing flooring, um. Right now, the plan is to just replace damaged tiles that are cracked without redoing all the floors. The existing DCT's in pretty good shape. And, uh, just replacing damaged tiles seems to be working, but in home ec had a lot more damage than anticipated, so we're probably gonna have to pull out all the floor tile in the home ec room and redo it. Which means abatement of, uh, the existing nine-by-nine tiles. That goes way back when they had asbestos in the glue, so that has to be done through a, uh, separate process. But it will only be one room so far, so that's, uh, that's the good news. Uh, this is the home ec room, just an overall picture of it, got it, waiting on the millwork to come in and painting, and then obviously the new flooring will go in. This is one room that's, uh, has been started. You can possibly see the floor tiles that have been changed out, they have a different sheen to it because they haven't been waxed, but, uh, once everything is stripped and waxed, um, they should blend in quite well. So the repairs on the floors have been working, they started painting, the ceilings have been painted black, and these are the new light fixtures, the LED fixtures that have been put in. Uh, just to give you an idea of the progress and what things are looking like right now. The next big phase on the middle school is the HVAC equipment. The equipment has come in, and they'll be starting that work within the next week or so. And then on top of that, the, uh, infill panels that are gonna fill in the glass. We're waiting on a delivery date, but that too should be within the next couple of weeks for that material to come in and that work can begin. The schedule remains a concern, uh, we've had some setbacks and delays due to changes and due to material availability. Um, we're working hard with the contractor to push that schedule, um, and try to hit the dates that we need to. Right now, phase one completion has been pushed back to January first. And we're hopeful that we can maintain that. Um, I think the good news is, is that phases two and three, because we did run into a lot of issues in phase one that we're ironing out now, that that's gonna smooth out phase two and three, and, uh, hopefully should go quicker.
The HVAC that you're putting in to the middle school, with the school being situated as it is. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my mind around how, around how do you do that with, when you have a different, smaller parts, you know, separated from the other and that kind of.
It, it's basically the same system they had before, this rooftop individual DX units, we call them, it's really like your house air conditioning. Is what it amounts to. Little, little better, I mean, they have, you know, different systems than you would normally put in your house, more commercial application. But, uh, all controlled by their own thermostat and rooftop unit with a closet for the, uh, air handler to deliver the air and the heat.
Am I correct, Mr. Butcher, that we can use Esser funds for this HVAC?
Yeah, we remember we ended up, uh, for the, for the renovation job, we were able.
Just reemphasize that.
More funding for.
We had shovel-ready things that we can just.
That's right.
Use Esser money and put them in that, and and this meets the standard that we need for those federal grants for air filtration, which is important, right?
That's correct. So that's, that's a whole nother thing we're working on too, contractors is reporting, sending invoices, uh, labor, so that.
Because y'all are gonna be handling the Esser funds.
That's right.
You're gonna be able to make sure that the standard of air filtration that the federal government is asking for is gonna be met with our new HVAC system.
And, and that's already been done. Through the design and planning process months ago, so that's parts in place. Now, the part of the puzzle that we have to work through is getting the reimbursement from Esser. Because the, that has to be fronted before, obviously, and once reimbursement that comes later, so, um, yeah. So that's why we are with the project, um, are there any questions? We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You just come from work, or you just grab them out of the back of your truck like you didn't work?
Yeah, I did, I, I looked a little from up, just to get them there, I looked like I should do something.
I, I was wondering, I ain't seen you every day, I just, I just. I know you just, just homework over there.
I think you understand, Mr. James, very knows.
That's okay, it's observed, I'm gonna be real.
Okay. About this?
No. Okay, you get the slide, you really in the process of giving our staff, uh, flu vaccines and those kind of things, that's the schedule that we know. Uh, COVID testing, I'm sorry. God damn, okay, that's COVID testing. Now, as you know, we're doing COVID tests right now at our schools, for those students, we have a content form. And I think it's going pretty good at, at this point. Hopefully we can speed up the number of forms that we have, so that we will be able to test more students. I think that it has been very positive for us, and I think the group that we are, with the Mary group, I think they have a lot of experience, because I sat in on a couple meetings with them, and basically they've been a lot of testing students. And, uh, at this point in time, I think it's gonna pay dividends, and just basically the challenge of trying to get more parents to, uh, to give a consent form.
Is there a part of our package, what was on the board?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir, everybody on the screen.
Okay, but I can't see the study.
We, uh, in the process of, uh, we in the process now of, uh, collecting applications, advertisements for our homework hotline and tutoring. So hoping the next week or so, we'll have a, a, a workforce in place to start the homework hotline and also do afternoon tutoring.
Okay, that's it, cool.
Yes. You know, the last thing you told us, we're gonna do what we needed to do, so that's what we're trying to do right now, deal that workforce. The next process will be to send out, uh, a survey to find out how many students are interested. I really wish all, uh, twenty-eight hundred students, twenty-nine hundred students would be interested, we know that's not gonna happen, but the students who are interested, we wanna make sure that we deal with those students and try to create that happen.
How are we paying these tutors?
Through Esser.
I know, but what are we paying them? Does it depend on qualifications?
Basically, well, well, if, uh, you know, uh, I think if we set a scale, this, this, do we set a scale of something?
Yes.
If we set a scale of something.
Yeah, we did.
So we're not using that, we're not using that same scale.
Okay.
Oh. So, with that being done, the ones that, is it up to the students to say that they want to them?
Yeah, I observe that. Their permission will go on to.
The parent.
Yeah, right.
But you're also in high school too.
Right, we're also asking the teacher, let's reach out to the parent, because a lot of time, you know, you send home something, it never really gets to the parent, so we are asking the teachers, call the parent and say, Fred Butcher, it would be beneficial for Fred Butcher to come to.
And a robo-call.
Right.
To, with Mr. Fields.
We're going to the robo-call, and we really also want teachers to make individual calls to parents.
Not trying to backtrack, but I didn't, I, I couldn't read what was on the board previously regarding the vaccines that they.
What was that vaccine, it's about the vaccine, um.
The test.
The testing, that's what I mean, the testing. Could you summarize what it basically says?
For the most part, the state is providing a company that we partner with to come in and do testing for our students and staff if they so desire. And our goal was to come back and have a rotation every seven days, where everybody would test everywhere, because of the fact that from talking to the gentleman who was responsible for doing the testing, with the death, you know, with death, with COVID, it was like seven to ten days for innovation. But with their virus, they're saying it's more like three to five days for innovation, so they feel like we were well within the guidelines, or well within the perimeter to test when you make it around every, every seven days. And with our, uh, with our basic curriculum activities, you know, we have somebody to test positive, then, you know, we go, go back and do two tests every two weeks.
And I was wondering how many, uh, uh, parent consent forms have we gotten lately? Because I, I remember sometime back, uh, they were very, we weren't getting a lot of parent consent forms, that's what I was trying to find out, has that picked up yet, as it relates to parent.
I'll check with Nurse Nell, that I won't say until you're there.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Because we can't test them unless we have their consent form.
That's right.
If some of kids who, who may not, their parents may not have consented, we're not testing them anyway.
That's right.
Okay.
Who, can I say eighteen?
But it's down with eighteen, you have to give consent if they're eighteen.
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Okay.
And Agent?
Yes.
And the board members have anything they would like to say, Dr. Rob?
Uh, no.
Is there?
No, sir.
Dr. Vaughn?
I'm sorry, Mr. James, please forgive me. We were approached by, uh, one or two community person, I think it was the day, was approached by, uh, some student. We're not having a parade, but the students would like to have a motorcade. And I think that a motorcade would be, it would be a lot less, uh, basic than a, kind of having a parade, because of the fact that when you lose. We have a parade, we're trying to put a parade together, you're trying to, you float everybody up on top of each other, all on, and those kind of things. And I think that with a motorcade, we could get the city to approve it this late day, Mr. Fields is here. Get the city to approve it this late day, we could probably put a motorcade off, and that would give some remnants of what the students would, you know, what their preferences are.
Well, if we do that, because someone called me about the possibility of a motorcade also, if we do that, let's make sure we have the correct, uh, number of persons overseeing that activity.
So a motorcade, so they will go through the school?
No, I think they wouldn't look at, maybe start on the bluff and go into some, some location. I think that what we have to do. Well, parents, we, we gotta make sure everybody have issue on it first of all. But Mr. Davis is gonna have to help us to, uh, provide the security, work with the city, along with the mayor, and all those kind of things.
But wouldn't, but wouldn't people steal alongside the road watching? But it won't be to the extent.
It probably wouldn't be to the, to that extent, and, and, and that's why I was concerned about, because if we, uh, authorize and, and are helping to sponsor a motorcade, if something does happen that's not good, then it comes back on us, as opposed to.
It can be funded by parent, not the district.
Okay. But, but they asking for our approval, the parents asking for our approval?
Basically, they meant, they made contact to see what was required for them to have a motorcade. And so those parents were directed, and they had to go, make contact with the, uh, city police department to get the necessary permit in order to, uh, have to have this motorcade. So it's not district, it's parents, they just can't do the district, because they were not quite certain of what they were supposed to do.
But can, I know what Ms. West said, but can we do it this way? Can we have the police and the sheriff to escort them instead of them just riding all around?
That, that was the plan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but that's the plan to have, probably escorting all, yeah.
It's still a part of.
Yeah, I'm trying to, because even though the parents are doing it, correct me if I'm wrong, chiming in, uh, uh, would we be indirectly sort of responsible if in fact we've discussed it and said, you know, we support it or something like that, I'm, come on, you have to leave a mind.
I think the risk is whether you actually promote it or are involved in it or sanction it. If there's a problem, you're gonna be, uh, involved in the, the legal aspects of it. Um, I don't know that there would be any way to avoid that. But, um, certainly, uh, having parents responsible for the development of it, them being involved in the route, them arranging for the escorts, would all be very important to demonstrate that this was not, uh, an event organized and sanctioned by the board.
Okay.
So they're notifying us, but we are not approving it. But now, you're understanding, Mr. Butcher, too, is that you can turn a car into a float pretty quickly, if you put fifty people on there, right, so.
Well, I think the parent, I think the parent would contact us, maybe we can give them some suggestions, they can contact us with some direction as well, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
And make sure they all add up to the one driving.
Right, and make it very clear to them that we, they have not received official board approval, but that we have been notified.
Well, I have a suggestion. I guess that's one, more than one way to skin a cat. Ms. McDonald, aren't you a parent?
Yes, sir.
Huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, you know, we're not doing this, but you, you know, you're a parent, you can do, you know, you can give them some direction and some guidance. Wouldn't that be correct?
Yes, sir.
If we were, we would have to say that to the point that we don't approve, uh, but you know, you do what you want to do, for the rep.
Yeah. Right.
Do we need to say that for the rep?
The person contacted me, I think she's a responsible citizen, been in, uh, in the city for a while, and for a long time, she's a retired teacher. And I think that she's working with, uh, you know, with, with the other thing.
Okay.
I, I don't think anybody's questioning that to a certain extent, we're just saying either we're in or we're not, and we need to make sure if we're not in, that we have the responsibility. If we are in, to make sure it's done right, with whatever safeguards we can come up with, that's kind of what I think you're saying.
I think that's right, but I would prefer not to have us involved.
Okay.
I will call the parent on tomorrow, and I expect somebody to make contact with Maggie Will Paul.
They'll, they'll.
That's tell those, right, because we're out of two that had that, that ride to have the anyway, so.
They'll, they'll. Okay, that is. You have anything? Ms. Newton have anything?
She's off.
Okay, I don't have anything.
Uh, of the most, I will, I have a closed determination.
Second.
Moving myself into a closed determination. We're in closed determination. Thank you all for coming out. Good evening.